We're short form right now. We need one more, one more person. For you guys. We have form now. Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hello, everyone. Welcome. Aloha. Welcome to our Ko'olau Law Neighborhood Board meeting for 10th October. Just to go over a quick, quick housekeeping rules before we start into our agenda. Rules for speaking. To ensure the maximum opportunity for all attendees to be heard, the following guidelines will apply. Those attending the meeting are reminded to mute their microphone if they're online. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to type their question in the chat box or raise their hand using the raise hand function in the online meeting platform, which is indicated by hand or unmute yourself at the appropriate time as indicated by the chair. If accessing the meeting using your phone and you have a comment, indicate this by pressing the symbol star nine. This will show the moderator of the chair that the person commenting on wish to speak. To mute or unmute your phone, press star six. Please wait until recognized by the chair to begin comments and address those comments to the chair. All official reports, comments, or concerns shall be three minutes or less. To help all attendees have the opportunity to hear the presentation and comments, please place your device on mute until you would like to speak. When you are recognized, unmute yourself and make your comments. Note, the board may take any action on any agenda item as required by the State Sunshine Law, HRS 92. Specific issues not noted on this agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda. A two-thirds vote for six of this eleven-member board is needed to add an item to the agenda. Items may not be added if they are of major importance and will affect the certificate number of people. With that said, we will start with our reports from HFB. I'm a new fire department. I believe that not in person, if you're online, please proceed with your report.
The statistics for the month of September are as follows. As far as fires are related, we had zero structure fires, one wildland fire, two nuisance fires, no cooking fires, and two activated alarms with no fire. We responded to forty-four medical emergencies, one motor vehicle collision with a pedestrian involved, and three motor vehicle collision crashes. No mountain rescues, two ocean rescues, and no hazardous material incidents. Fire safety tip: This month is fire prevention month. National Fire Protection Association sponsors fire prevention meeting, which is observed from October eighth to fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. The national campaign is promoted throughout the month of October. This year's theme is cooking safety. Starts with you. Pay attention to fire prevention. Did you know cooking fires are the leading cause of home fires and home fire injuries? Unattended cooking is a leading cause of cooking fires and deaths. What can you do? The good news is you can prevent most fire, cooking fires and burns. Help keep your family safer with these simple but effective tips. Unblock handles towards the back of the stove. Always keep a lid nearby when cooking. If a small grease fire starts, slide the lid with a fan and turn off the burner. Watch what you eat. Save a timer to remind you that you are cooking. Have a kid and a pet-free zone of at least three feet around the stove and areas where hot food or drink is prepared or carried. We have any questions this week?
Okay, thank you very much. We have questions from board members in person. Okay, here it is. Do we have questions from board members online?
None.
Okay, thank you. You have questions from members of the community in person? Do we have questions from members of the community online?
Casey.
Casey, please proceed with your question.
Um, aloha. Could you tell us, in light of the Maui fire, as you know, we had that huge fire in Lake Ni'ia Hills that burned for quite a long time, is there any new reevaluation of the area and, and keeping certain areas cleaner or away from the out things? Are they relooking at our hills or certain areas around the, the towns? Or is that not being done now?
Department has been doing an island-wide assessment of all the different companies throughout the island. We've been going through and taking a closer look at all of our wildland and urban interface areas and putting together a list. So it's common knowledge throughout the department, and we have notes in there. A little bit more detailed risk assessment. And as far as for the community, on the Honolulu Fire Department website, there is an action guide that has a lot of information as far as what we can do within the public to help protect our own homes and immediate zones around them, to hopefully prevent tragedy from occurring here.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything we should be doing each community or?
There is a lot of information. This is kind of a lot to cover. If you go ahead and log onto the Honolulu Fire Department website, it gives you a detailed breakdown of what we can do as individuals to protect ourselves.
Yes, thank you very much. Other questions from members online, the community online? We have a little more forward in our agenda. That's so much for your presentation. Okay, next up, we have HFB. It's the, the officer you, please proceed.
Good evening, board. Can you everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Lieutenant Sanford, you, I'll present the stats for September. September, there were three motor vehicle thefts compared to one the previous month. Burglaries remain unchanged at two. Thefts reduced from twenty-five to eleven. Vehicle break-ins reduced from seven to three, and there were zero robberies. Be willing to answer any questions at this time.
Okay, members from the board members in person. Questions from members of the board members online? Okay, questions from members of the community in person? Okay, questions from members of the community online. Casey, go ahead.
Yes, there were, was trouble last month to being able to hear the police report. Are you able to say anything or give us any details? Or has there been any resolution? There was a murder in Kahuku, and I didn't know if you're allowed to say anything about it. Was the person houseless, or are you allowed to say anything about that, or has it been solved?
The investigation is ongoing, so I'm not able to provide you with any details right now.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from members of the public online? Okay, here it is. Thank you, officer you.
Good night.
We'll see you next month.
Good night.
Moving forward, United States Army, here in person, please come to the front here. You have the microphone.
Good evening. I'm Sir First Class Matt Wright, representing the Twenty-Fifth Division Sustainability Brigade and US Army Hawaii. US Army Garrison Hawaii's next hiring fair is going to be on November twenty-eighth. They're going to be doing it at Airport Honolulu Hotel. It's going to start at eight AM, go to two thirty PM. It'll be open to the public, and they'll have job offers and provisional hiring that day at the fair. If you want to look ahead of time, you can go to H-I-M-W-R dot com, or you can show up in person if you do that and are a walk-in. Just go ahead and bring two references, proof ID, social security card, a resume, or an application with you. Next thing I want to talk about, I actually wanted to spend a couple minutes to focus on the Joint Pacific Multi-Readiness Center exercise that's getting ready to take off. Our community members may have heard some telecon that, and that's what this is all about. So Twenty-Fifth ID is going to execute JPMRC twenty-four oh one in coordination with Joint Pacific Multinational Readiness Center and the One-Ninety-Sixth Infantry Brigade. It's going to be happening mostly between November first and tenth. The, the main exercise is happening, and then it'll be on Oahu and Hawaii islands. During that time, residents will experience increased military convo traffic on the roads, military aircraft overflight as well. The majority of the training locations are going to be on the northern portion of Oahu and some in the central island. However, residents still may see troops traveling to and from training areas on the road. We expect to see increased low-flying helicopters over the training areas and fixed-wing aircraft flown into Wheeler Army Airfield and Dillingham Military Reservation. The exercise is critical for the US military to prepare and validate Twenty-Five ID's ability to deploy, fight, and win in combat operations across the Indo-Pacific if required. If you have additional questions or require additional information, you can contact eight oh eight six five six three four eight seven. Also, the Garrison website has some media advisories and fact sheets for JPMRC that you can see, and we brought some copies of them into this room at the back by the sign-in table. A couple other notes about JPMRC twenty-four oh one. The Army Twenty-Five ID strives to maintain an open and honest communication with the local community, so we're going to proactively share training and noise advisories to inform local community and mitigate that concern, that uncertainty and that misinformation. We're going to make every effort to reduce burdens on the community, including helicopter noise. When we can't do that, we're going to make sure that we continue to inform the local government, media, neighborhood boards, and posts, and we're going to update on social media. Now, training is going to include blank ammunition and explosive simulations during daytime and nighttime hours in the following areas. On the Big Island of Hawaii, in the Pohakalua Training Area, here on Oahu, Bellows Air Force Station, Dillingham Army Airfield, Kahuku Training Area, Kauai Loa, Mountain Ranges, Halei Manu Plantation, and Schofield Varic East and South Ranges. Training may occur outside those primary training areas and other military training areas as well. You may see some military convoys of six or more military vehicles on the roads traveling between trading areas on Oahu. Exec times and routes aren't available right now because they're based on the training scenario. Just know that the units are going to make every available effort to mitigate those convoys and conduct them at times that won't significantly impact, significantly impact residents and communities. A Twenty-Five ID appreciates the community's understanding and continues to support the local military training. Along with Operation Pathways, JPMRC twenty-four oh one facilitates unit readiness in the region and allows commanders to train their forces in realistic environments and conditions where they are most likely to campaign and be employed in the event of crisis or conflict. I can't stress enough that we know that it may be loud at some times, but the sounds of training represent how the military ensures the nation's service members are ready to accomplish the mission and return home safely afterwards. Depending on any questions.
Thank you. Questions from board members in person? Questions from board members online? Okay, questions from members of the public in person? Questions from members of the public online? Michael, Michael, please proceed. Okay. If you could unmute this.
Yeah. Oh, let me see. Hey, Michael, you can't, you can't hear you. unmute your, your.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, great. No, it's just kind of general question, you know, like, I know that there's a lot of military activity on Oahu compared to other places, and I, I mean, it just seems a little bit out of balance, the fact that, you know, the population is so large in Oahu, and you know, it would just seem to me, you know, why don't you like do more of this training work somewhere in remote areas or something, you know, rather than in, in a very highly densely populated island, you know. You know, I mean, there's probably lots of areas in the mainland that are, are, you know, available, like in Nevada or whatever. There, there, there's just thousands and millions of acres of available that nobody would even notice, you know. I mean, just a concern that's always been in mind over the years, like, why, 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 why is Oahu, you know, you know, so much, you know, used for training, you know?
That's a great question, Michael. Thank you. The primary reason is location. Oahu is right here in the Pacific, so the Pacific Division is able to base here and handle our training here on the island with, and with our partner nations throughout the Indo-Pacific to secure the free and open Indo-Pacific.
Well, okay, but my, the main question I had is like, why, why do you do it in a, in a very dense island? I mean, when there's other locations available that are, are very low density?
Some of those decisions are above my level, but I can say that this is not the only place we train. We also train on other islands here in Hawaii as well as other partner nations throughout the Indo-Pacific, and like you mentioned, there's lots of training and locations throughout the mainland as well.
Okay.
I do have one follow-up question. So, um, with everything happening in the Middle East, are you folks should have, or anything come up that you guys have a higher alert or something, anything in general you could share or?
What I know right now is that the division's priority is JPMRC, preparing our troops to stay vigilant and be ready to partner with our nations, our national partners here in the Indo-Pacific area.
So no plans to shift the Indo-Pacific to other parts of the world, right?
Perfect. I have a ability to wear any of those things.
Can you explain what JPMRC means?
JPMRC is the Joint Multinational Pacific Readiness Center.
Got it.
It's a huge thing, this huge word to, to say at Training Center. It's like NTC in California or JRTC in Mississippi.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, moving on. Moving on into the agenda, filling of vacancies, Sub District One, which is Kahuku, we have one vacancy. Sub District Two, which is Ni'ia, we have two vacancies. I'll turn it back over to you to kind of just explain the voting process.
Okay, so when it comes to the filling of vacancies, I have to verify your location, that you're within the sub-districts. And so what would, what that would entail is I would need to know at least, get a picture of your ID. We can ask for nominations if there's any volunteers available for these two. Actually, there's three vacancies because there's two in Sub District Two and one vacancy in Sub District One. If, if there's any volunteers, I would have to verify your information before I can put you on the board.
Okay, I guess with that announcement, is there anyone present?
Yeah.
Here that would like to serve on the Ko'olau Law Neighborhood Board? Okay, so. Right.
Aloha.
You could come and do so.
Yeah.
Um, aloha. My name is Lily Makaila, and I'm pretty sure I live in Sub District One.
Sub District One, okay. What street do you?
Sub District One, Kahuku.
Um, Kamala Highway.
Yep, you're verified. Okay, so tell us a little bit about yourself.
Oh, yeah, I've been in the microphone.
Oh, okay, sure.
Yeah. I previously lived in Ko'olau Poco for fifteen years, but moved to Ko'olau Loa in twenty eighteen. And I've been in Sub District One for almost three years now.
Awesome. Yeah.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Um. Are you doing it, yes?
Lily Makaila.
Volunteer positions in Kohuku, anything you're doing with the association or anything like that?
Not currently.
So what, what are you, why, why are you interested in this?
Um, I have been more active at the Kahalu Neighborhood Board, but don't live there. And so just trying to be more active in my own community.
Okay, very good. Okay. Sure, board members, if you have questions?
Yeah.
Give it a try.
What is, what is affecting our community are you most interested in? What are the concerns that you think are, are very significant in our community?
I'll hold it, you know, I'll hold it for you.
Okay, I'm a professional planner by trade, and so I've worked professionally in the planning industry for five years, six years actually. So I have familiarity with environmental assessments, environmental impact statements, special management plans, permitting, state and county level permitting, and Chapter Three, Four, Three, which is the environmental reviews statewide, and then also like federal MIPA. I also do grant writing, and yeah.
Perfect. Questions from other board members?
Do you have any main concerns about what's going on in Ko'olau Loa that affect your community or other communities?
Um, I spoke a little bit last night at the Kahalu Neighborhood Board about, about an upcoming special use permit application reviewed by the Planning Commission that will be taking place this coming week. I feel like public input for things like that are often overlooked, and I think there's not a lot of notice to the public. I think if you don't actively look for it, then you won't know what's happening in your area, especially when it comes to state permitting. And then, of course, having properly done environmental assessments, I think that folks are asked to comment on environmental assessments without understanding what makes a high-quality document. And I also think that there's a lot of things happening along the shoreline for Ko'olau Loa and Ko'olau Poco that can affect, that will affect us for generations to come. And I think that there's a clause where they have to come to the Neighborhood Board for certain levels of presentation, but I think that it's often limited by time and that folks aren't always able to get like a really deep critique of those documents and where there might be gaps and where community consultation hasn't been as robust as it could be. I have one more question.
Have you ever attended the Kahuku community meeting or participated in your community association at all?
No.
Okay. Are you interested in doing that?
Definitely, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, so I guess moving next in the process, if you could explain.
Okay.
For the board.
Okay, so for next, the next process is that if all people want to nominate Lily Makaila, Makaila. Okay, and, um, so it would be a board vote. What we will do is we will actually do a roll call vote to have her volunteer and take the position because she's already verified that she is in Sub District One. As of tonight, because the agenda is item, we can all vote for them or the board can vote for them. We have a quorum of six, so that can be done today.
Okay, so with that said, everyone, do I have?
I nominate, I nominate.
Nomination?
Okay.
Okay, we have an, we have a nomination from Board Member Gray. We have a second. Okay, now it's a roll call vote.
Yeah.
So we'll start in person.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
Do you see it? Sunny?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, Chair Woodside as well, unanimous?
And, okay, perfect. Okay, awesome. Yep, okay, welcome.
Welcome.
And then I will, if you want to come over here, I can give you the auto office. Yeah. Okay, perfect. All right, so that, maybe, maybe the auto bottles? Who knows? Okay, so Lily, could you repeat after me?
Sure.
I solemnly swear that I will faithfully support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America, the Constitution and laws of the state of Hawaii, the Charter and Laws of the city and county of Honolulu, and the provisions of the neighborhood plan and will conscientiously and impartially discharge my duties to the best of my ability as a Ko'olau Loa member of the Neighborhood Board, of which I have been elected. Elected, yeah, perfect. Okay, welcome.
Can I get, sorry, can you spell your last name for me, please?
M-A-T-H-I.
M-A-A-I.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to Sub District Two, which is Ni'ia. Do we have any members that would like to serve here in person? Rickets. Wow. I've talked to some people. I've got eighty percent no's. I've got maybe two guesses, but they're all off either way now. So we'll see, but. But he can lay one or two? Okay. Okay. Okay, we're good?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, seriously enough, I'm lying, we're just gonna move on.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, next in board, uh, next agenda item is approval of meeting minutes for Thursday, September fourteenth. Three, uh, four minutes have been issued, issued beforehand, board members, is there any changes? Who did, anything that I could change from the minutes? If not, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I moved to approve.
Okay, we have moved to approve a second and a third, so perfect. Uh, are there any objections? Any? Chair Voltsai, I assume that's all of them.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, moving forward, um, representative from the mayor's office, Kat, are you online?
I am here. Good evening, good evening, everybody. So I have five updates for a mayor's newsletter. Um, update one is mayor's stance on enforcing the public welfare laws. So the ACLU lawsuit seeks to prohibit the city from enforcing public welfare laws and takes away the city's ability to enforce laws that protect and safeguard the public. The city disagrees with the ACLU's lawsuit. Homelessness is a complex and pressing issue that affects us all, so the mayor wants to assure everyone that the city is committed to addressing this issue with compassion and empathy and will focus on finding long-term solutions. Update two, on September fifth, Mayor Blangiardi joined prosecutor, uh, Stephen All, council chair Tommy Waters and various other community and law enforcement leaders to celebrate the first year anniversary of the Safe and Sound Waikiki Initiative. Um, update three, September was a busy month when it comes to the city's plan to facilitate the creation of new affordable housing units. There are three projects that are going to be in mayor's newsletter, but the highlights are Parkley Village and Kapolei, Kiha Pai Place in Kailua and Haleviolu in Chinatown. Update four, it's fire prevention week, uh, from October eighth to thirteen, but while land fire season is year round and Hawaii and drought conditions have increased the threats, the threats of fire across our island home. Visit the Honolulu Fire Department's Instagram and Facebook pages every day this week for tips. And the last update, all across Oahu, the city's credit card friendly on-street parking mark meters have been upgraded to better serve the public. These four G connected parking meters were modernized to allow users to pay for parking safely, securely and quickly, and by the end of the year, many of the coin only meters will be upgraded to the new systems as well. So the October twenty-three, twenty twenty-three edition of the mayor's newsletter is available online. I will drop a link in the chat uh, so that you can read more. Okay, I have, uh, three follow-ups from last meeting and then I'll, I'll take the, uh, other new questions after that. So last meeting, we talked a lot about vacation bans and I think that there was a, um, a question to HPD about, you know, whether this was happening at Ha'ola Beach Park and, you know, whether there was any training to HPD staff. HPD reports as follows. Since receiving this issue, District Four, which is Kailua, Koneohe and Kahuku, officers monitored Kaula Beach Park in seven eleven areas and did not observe any human habitation, campers and park facilities or vacation vans. Officers will continue to make checks and take the appropriate enforcement action when violations are observed. Please encourage the community members to call nine-one-one to report unlawful or suspicious activity as this would result in a more expeditious response. Without jeopardizing one's safety, photos of illegal activities and campers, license plates of vacation vans or evidence of violations would support complaints and are useful to an investigation. Officers have been reminded of enforcement options. Uh, the second was to DPP concerned with transient vacation rentals and more information about DPP's investigations. DPP reports, the short-term, short-term rental enforcement branch is working closely with the local community and legal vacation rental owners to tackle the issue of illegal short-term vacation rentals on Oahu. Inspections of potential short-term vacation rentals are carried out to ensure compliance with ordinance twenty-two dash seven. Catching violators in the act can be quite challenging and time-consuming. Our investigators are trained to understand the level of evidence required to support a prima facie case for issuing a violation. We understand that the public might not always see the extensive effort that goes into gathering the necessary evidence to build a strong case for a violation, which can understandably be frustrating. Rest assured, our investigators will continue to follow up on all complaints to maintain open communication with the communities that we serve. Finally, the last question was, um, about Ha'ola Beach Park and it, the, the community wanted the signs to be reestablished. DPR reports that they will inspect the signs at Ha'ola Beach Park and if the signs and poles need to be replaced or repaired, work will be completed by the end of October. Those were my updates. I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, questions from board members in person? Okay, questions from board members online? Questions for members of the public in person? Sorry, members of the public. All right, we'll go to members of the public online.
Do you have a question?
Hello, question?
Yeah, I, oh. Okay, got it.
I will do that.
He needs a meal.
Yes, thank you. So the question is, Kat, there, there was a, a request to put a crosswalk across from seven eleven and the bay in there at Ha'ola Park. And so you didn't mention that in your report. Uh, do you have an update for us on that?
Uh, that wasn't in my list of questions from last week. Can you repeat that? The crosswalk at seven eleven and Ha'ola Beach Park?
Yes, adding a crosswalk there from seven eleven to the Ha'ola Beach Park across the street.
I, I will pass on the request to DTS and I will report back next week, or excuse me, next month.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions? Yeah, um, members of the public online, Casey, your hands up, please proceed with your question. And then we'll go to Michael after that. Okay, see, go ahead.
Um, thanks, Kat. Two questions. Um, first of all, last week you, um, you gave us a great summary of, um, DPP's, well, different responses for illegal vacation vans, but they were quite lengthy and, um, they're not in the minute. How can we get a copy of all that you said, a written copy? And, um, uh, secondly, um, we're, I'm now hearing that last week they said there were now only two, um, people working to, um, in your, uh, to stop illegal vacation rentals at DPP. You only had two inspectors as of last week. Can you tell me the number of inspectors that you have? Um, and we know that you're working, um, inspectors are working with some community members in other areas. But we did not believe they were working with anyone in, in our area. But how many inspectors are actually hired?
Thank you. Understood. I will ask DPP and I will get back to you next month as to how many inspectors are in their short term. What is S-STRAB, uh, Short Term Rental Enforcement Branch? Um, I pasted DPP's analysis for the vacation rentals into the chat box.
Also, um, did you have one from HPD? I thought you had two that you, you rapidly said last month.
Uh, I, DPP's was the, was, was the one that I put into the chat box.
Okay, and rest of the honors, so last month's, um, mayor's report, what I do is I actually paste it into the Google Drive. The board's Google Drive and the public is allowed to see it. If you have the minutes available to you, um, that was mailed to you, there is a, a section on the top of the minutes called reports and other meeting materials can be found at, and there's a Google Drive link that you can double-click on it and it actually goes to the exact month of what the report was and what concern I, I ended up posting the mayor's report on there. So if you have any questions about that, you can check the Google Drive and it's available for even previous months.
And then for Kat's responses, because I couldn't find it on the Google Drive, sorry.
It should, so the responses to the questions, um, I actually post the whole report on it. So the questions, um, of the department and the responses is in the second section. That's the responses that Kat gave us.
Mahalo, thank you. I'll look again.
Okay, thank you.
And for your convenience, I did just put them in the chat. So both of DPP's and HPD's analysis.
Okay, thank you very much, Kat. Uh, Michael, please proceed with your question.
Michael, I think you're on mute.
Michael, can you hear us, Michael? We can't, we can't hear you. You're still on mute.
I can, I'm requesting to unmute him and he's giving him unmuting himself.
I'm trying, Michael, I'm here with you.
Okay, you can hear me.
Ah, there we go. Yes, I could hear you.
Okay, very good. I'm not sure if you're the right person, so I'm just gonna throw this out. Um, I got a problem with my property in Hawulla. Um, it's been going out for six months. I'm trying to find who in the city and county is the right department to handle the fact that the city street is encroaching upon my property and it's holding up my building permit.
So I actually think that was just forwarded to my department this week. I, I did see it. So you're asking the right person. Yeah, it, it came into the Department of Land Management this week. I think it bounced around between a few departments, but it, it did land with us, so. Um, we, we got it. It's on Hawula, uh, Homestead Road, right?
Right, it's, uh, this is the, uh, the picture that I sent in, the email with the, you remember that?
Yeah, so it, it just came into our department. Um, we're, we're meeting with another department, uh, that, because they handled a road, so. No resolution yet, but I, I did personally see it.
Okay, so I guess they have my email and everything and they'll get back to me?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, thank you, everyone. Um, any other questions from members online? Okay, Karen and Seeenan, thank you very much, Kat.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Okay, moving forward, um, council member Matt Wire, or staff? Latani?
Hi.
There he is, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Hi, aloha, Latani Pelletier, on behalf of council member Matt Wire. Um, first, I'd like to introduce our new community liaison, Mukihana Maldonado, who's right there, uh, who I see on the camera now. Um, so I mean, I've already met her at the Ka'ava Ha'ola DOT Town Hall at Swansea Beach Park two weeks ago. Uh, Mukihana will be taking over the community issues for Kaula Poko and Kaula Loa areas of our district. Um, I'm still here at the council member's office. I'm just gonna be focusing more on the policy side of things and I believe that she has a spreadsheet, uh, excuse me, a sign-in sheet for anyone who, uh, wants to sign up for our, uh, any updates from our office via email and if anybody online wants to sign up, if you put your info in the chat, um, I'll take that back to our office as well. I have a quick legis, uh, quick announcement and then a few legislative updates. Just wanna announce real quick that, um, the city is now accepting grant in, in applications. And so anyone who's interested in a GIA, um, you know, submitting an application, I'll put a link in the chat where you can find more information. Um, but just be aware that proposals need to be submitted by two PM, uh, November twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Um, last year, uh, more than ten point six million dollars in GIA was awarded to sixty-seven nonprofits across Oahu. Um, moving on to legislative updates in light of everything that is going on, uh, on Maui and calls that we've kind of, um, been fielding in our office, council member Wire has introduced three resolutions as part of an emergency preparedness package. Um, resolution twenty-three dash two-three-nine, contributed with council chair Tommy Waters, would initiate a, um, uh, charter amendment to add certain minimum qualifications for the director of emergency management. Um, this measure passed first reading last week and is referred to the Committee on Executive Matters and Legislative Affairs. Uh, resolution two forty, contributed with budget chair Radiant Cordero, would, uh, request the city administration to present annual budget recommendations, uh, that address long-term emergency preparedness. So prioritizing funding, collaborating with various agencies, regularly updating, uh, emergency preparedness plans. This measure has been referred directly to the budget committee, which council member Wire is the chair of. And then finally, resolution twenty-three dash two-four-one, contributed with public safety chair Val Akino Okimoto. Uh, this urges the city administration to establish a working group, uh, to provide recommendations on long-term emergency preparedness within the context of residential housing. And so this group would comprise representatives from relevant city entities, buildings and trades, experts, architects, engineers, uh, and they would be considering potential amendments to building, zoning and housing codes that would ensure residential structures are resilient. Uh, this measure has been referred directly to the Committee on Public Safety. Um, you know, which is all to say that, you know, the Honolulu City Council remains committed to ensuring our safety and well-being of its residents and that these measures reflect the council's proactive, uh, planning collaboration across the sectors to address the challenges of the future. Uh, and with that, I'm happy to take any, um, questions or comments back to the office.
Thank you. Any questions from members of the board? Okay, questions from members of the board online? Okay. Um, members from, uh, questions for members of the community in Britain? Okay, we'll go through members of the community online. Casey, your hand is up, please proceed with your question.
Yeah, thank you, Latani. Um, two things. Is it, um, possible that you can help us, um, track the illegal vacation rentals or the fact that, um, they are not seeming to be got and shut down? Um, we know that, um, Matt heads the housing committee and yes, building new affordable housing is important. But first of all, since we have easily over a thousand illegal vacation rentals and Kaula Loa shutting them down is the, should be the first and quickest way to get more housing in the area. And second, um, it's my understanding that there are no, um, uh, homeless outreach workers from the city. And again, Matt is head, head of that, um, committee for, um, Kaula Loa. Is there any way to get more help, um, for the houseless, the homeless in this area from the city? Um, it's, uh, thank you. That would be great.
Yeah, with regards to the, um, uh, transient vacation rentals, it's definitely, I mean, it's a huge issue, everybody is, uh, you know, there are a lot of people bring these, um, concerns to our office and we're aware that it is frustrating at the pace that it seems to be going at. And so I, I mean, and uh, and sorry for that, but yes, we will help, um, continue to track these issues. We'll try our best to help the department as they flesh out their, um, oh, I forget what the acronym was that Kat just mentioned. Um, you know, the transient vacation rental, uh, agency that they have within there. Um, and other measures that council has engaged in that don't address TBRs specifically, but, uh, you know, the vacant homes tax, uh, for example, is kind of one avenue to address that, but, um, and, and which is to say that, you know, it is a continuing conversation and council member Wire is in it. And, uh, and thank you for continuing to bring these concerns to the neighborhood board and to our office. And certainly if there's any in, information about specific operations going on, at least forward those concerns to our office and to the Department of Planning and Permitting. Um, in regards to your question about the homeless outreach workers, um, are you, uh, referring to core the city rent that deals with homeless folks, I think primarily in the urban area? Um, otherwise, uh, our Department of, um, Community Services, I believe, will be dealing with. I'm sorry?
No, please, continue.
Continue, sorry, Latani.
Oh, uh, otherwise, from the city, I think it might be the Department of Community Services would be, uh, the city entity engaged with addressing homelessness directly. Otherwise, um, you know, the Hawaii Health Harm Reduction Center folks is a state contracted by the state to address homelessness in the area.
Okay. Any other questions from members of the public online? Okay, Karen and Seeenan, thank you guys very much. Moving forward in our agenda, we'll go to US House Representative, Congresswoman Jocelyn Stapper. I can drop these, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, Chair, members of the board. Kendra Uishi with Representative Jill Takuta's office. Uh, just this afternoon, I submitted a monthly October report. I apologize for sending it, um, so late. Uh, thank you to Judy Ann for acknowledging receipt of that. Uh, one thing that's not on the report that I wanted to mention, um, is with regard to, you know, everything going on in the Middle East and Israel, we have gotten a couple of phone calls from people who are trying to help, um, friends and family members to, who are, you know, stuck in Israel that are trying to get out. And so I'm gonna put a link in the chat to, um, uh, the State Department website, uh, crisis intake form. Uh, that's the best way for people to get, um, information on, uh, you know, trying to, uh, leave Israel. So, we haven't gotten a lot of it, but we did, we have had a few, so I'd like to just share that with everyone. Uh, going back to the, uh, monthly report, just a few things to highlight. Um, on September 20, Rep Takuta and Representative Diana Harshberger of Tennessee launched a bipartisan rural health caucus along with 34 members, and so that's something we're really excited about. They used to have one, uh, I think, a long time ago, maybe 10-plus years. Um, you know, given all of the needs of, uh, especially a state like ours, an island state, with a lot of, uh, remote and rural, uh, pockets. You know, that, that is something of interest to the, uh, many members in the House right now. Uh, and just a couple of deadlines to highlight, we have a deadline coming up this Monday, October 16, for Military Academy nomination, so, um, we have that. And then we also have on November 1st, a deadline to submit, uh, applications for the Congressional App Challenge. So for, um, you know, students who are in STEM fields and computer science. And I think that is it. I'm happy to take any questions. I saw something pop in the chat. I will put my email in there.
Okay, thank you. Do we have questions from board members in person? Okay, questions from board members online? Okay, now, questions from members of the public in person? And then questions from members of the public online. Casey, please proceed.
Sorry, um, thank you so much. I know before, um, uh, Jill, I mean Representative Takuta have been very, um, good with tracking grants, because there are so many grants, federal money. It says they go to Hawaiians or say they go to rural areas, and Ko'ala Loa really doesn't get anything. Or if there's like $11 million in Hawaiian education, we get, uh, maybe two or three programs just one day. The, it's like the nonprofit flies through. Does she have time to track that, um, yet? Or I know you, you all and Mahalo have been focused on Maui. Is she starting to do it, or is that gonna be postponed for a couple of months still? Because I still have some concerns about grants that are supposed to vote. Uh, we should be getting some of these, it doesn't seem to be.
Yeah, it is something that, you know, has always been, uh, you know, on all of our minds, and uh, right now, I, I think frankly, we just have not had the capacity to do it between, um, uh, you know, especially our Hawaii office. It, it did take us a while to get our district office staffed up. If there is something in particular, and I know you've mentioned this before, especially with Hawaiian education, we could try to, um, do some research on that more specifically. Uh, I think there's so many grants. What, what I've learned um, in this role is that there are, there are a lot of grants that, um, get awarded. Uh, but there seems to be no, like, one-stop shop that, that tracks all of that. So we, we could try to at least take a look at the Hawaiian education for a start, if that helps.
Yeah. Mahalo, that would be great. Um, training programs, um, Hawaiians, many of the rural programs, we don't seem to be getting the money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Any other questions from members of the public online? All right, here in Inseanam, thank you very much, Kendra. We'll see you next month. Forward in our, in our agenda, uh, Senator Brenton Awah, I believe you're here, sir. Please proceed with your report.
Oh, where is it? There we are. Aloha, Chair and Board Members. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, I have Senator Awah here with us, um, so he's gonna go ahead and share what we've been doing and what we're looking forward to. We are in La'ia for a community, uh, meeting, so I'm gonna give it over to him really quick, okay?
Aloha. Yes, my son, the father, uh, that, uh, for this La'ia Community Park, uh, the noise issue, so I'm gonna get right back to this after. But I wanted to let you guys know, uh, first off, on earlier, I asked, uh, Mayor's official about the 7-Eleven crosswalks. I'm a little out of breath, by the way. Just had surgery, someone crutches. Um, that, we put in the request for, through the Department of Transportation, the State Department of Transportation, a month ago, so we'll follow back up. A lot of our requests have taken a long time. On these lots, or the city's, or Kahuku Elementary, and that one is done, but that one's opening this summer. Follow up with DOT. Uh, DOT, I don't wanna slam that many. Matter of fact, uh, that, if you guys didn't hear, it's the time air fit. Mokulea for, you know, the past eight, seven-plus years, on, on record, it couldn't be more than that. We um, a little per 15 gallons of drinking water a month because of leaky pipes. Um, the Army is the landowner, listed to the DOT. Nobody really could make an agreement to fix that pipe while the DOT. Uh, we ended up doing a story. That we had, the story, a four-star general pushed it, two-star general pushed it down to the Colonel over here who worked with the DOT, and they got that thing solved, so they, when they started climbing pipes, that's pretty much time, but confirmed that next meeting. We were saving, but a billion gallons for the press. We tried to park, um, to save 11 million more gallons a month out at the Kani'ohi Marine Corps Base. Out there, they wanna use their gray water that they're currently pumping out to the ocean to water their golf course, the Clipper Golf Course. The Department of Health has told them. Board of Water Supply has pushed for them to allow the great water. Conversation went only about, we went to the Department of Health. That's why they don't want to allow that, so we bumped into the Governor's Chief of Staff. Wonder what was going on. He said, work on it. So, uh, we confirmed that today, that the Governor's Office is working with the Department of Health to see if we can use, um, that gray water on the golf course out there, so we can save 11 million gallons of water. Is there anything else that we needed to, oh, and right after the thing, we were headed to BCC, pretend, uh, for their, kind of, for 15th night. And then we just thank everybody, okay, all to be, um, DOT, Rep Pagawa, and Councilman Wire, and a bunch for the Kamehameha Highway erosion, there was a lot of meat off the cuts, talking to DOT to try to get more, what, come up. Trying to work on that, um, for a while now, and if anybody wants to get on, I don't know, Tati wants to get some, what, or, yeah. Oh, but one of the pitches, the DLNR for the Kamehameha to build, uh, the fish pond, not, not real fish ponds where you're, you know, fishing, but particularly like rock things, kind of like out of Havon, the long stretch, and Chico's house, Bo'akani, Ken. They, they built those kind of, you know, barriers, barriers. DLNR is, is basically green light. Those plants, we can work with them and work with the community, the community to, uh, be the one that's coming up. Um, but before we get to that, I know this is out of Ko'ala for, this is in Kahalulu, but right now that we have is we're gonna try to put a bunch of ulu tree in the ground, um, on Kamehameha Highway, right off of Kamehameha Highway, or, or sorry, sorry, scratch that. Right off of Kahikiili Highway, right before the hygienic store, where, uh, people vend on the side of the road in that real grass open space. Uh, we're gonna knock down all that holicore, all that, um, California grass that's deeper in by the canal. It's, it's quite a ways away from the road, and we're gonna plant a line of ulu. We got clearance from the DOT, so that's upcoming. Um, the rock formations gotta be right after that, and then we're gonna run into session. And we've got a couple other community projects. Sorry, it's on time. All right, we, but yeah, we gotta get to the, back to this La'ia. I'll leave it with um, if you guys have questions, and I'll be right over here, if there's anything that can answer. I'm gonna jump into. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Senator. Samantha, thanks for that. Um, report starting, you guys, it's your meeting, but we appreciate you being here. Senator was kind of broken up on his audio, so I know you mentioned a lot about DOT and what was going on with, um, some of the crosswalky things, and I think by Kahuku Elementary, um, but you can download that.
Yeah, uh, and I apologize in here, but I'll go ahead and put the notes together had shared, and I'll email that to you, uh, tomorrow, Chair, and then you can share that with your board members. Um, I'm not sure exactly where it was breaking up, but, um, everything that he reported, I'll go ahead and email to the board.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. So I will open up for questions, questions from board members in person. Okay, thank you very much. Questions from board members online? Okay, questions from members of the, members of the public in person? Oh. Questions from members of the public online? Casey, go ahead. Please proceed.
Hey, um, quickly, three things. Is, um, because Brenton's on the Housing Committee, is he able to do anything to help us, um, shut down the, um, illegal vacation rentals, the Airbnbs? Um, the secondly, um, is he's on the culture and arts. Would he be able to help us, um, get, um, more training for our musicians? So they can learn how to, um, get their royalties, or their streaming royalties. That's a very inexpensive program and could really help our musicians this size. We have a lot of talent, and thirdly, for the ag, there was a program with Grow Hawaii, um, at Poonaloo. Is it possible to get that back? More classes on ag, um, more training. It was popular before. And it was there, and I know who's on the Ag Committee. So those are three, um, areas that I didn't know if he's gonna work on. He's doing so much. Um, and, um, love to hear if he's gonna, um, put any bills forward on those. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Um, onto the illegal vacation rentals. We are gonna be scheduling a meeting with Council Member Matt Wire, and just seeing what we can do to collaborate and maybe co-sponsor bills on the state side. So we'll go ahead and revisit that idea, also with the musical, we'll mention then, uh, we'll respond for you tonight. I apologize, please, with the third thing.
Sorry, with ag? Ag, sorry, you're breaking up to ag crisis before Grow Hawaii. I'll put it in the chat. Maybe that's easier. Um, yeah. Did well. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Thank you, and I apologize for the reception, um, but yes, go ahead, put it in the chat. I'll screenshot it and I'll get back to you.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions from members of the public online? Okay, here in Inseanam, thank you. Thank you again, Samantha. We'll see you guys next month.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward in our agenda, we're supposed to have, uh, House Representative Shaw Quinnlin. He called to say that we were unable to make it tonight, so let's put that in the notes. Thank you.
Yep, sure. Um, I, I recognize that Representative Quinnlin isn't here, but I just wanna make sure that it goes on record tonight. Poonaloo community is extremely concerned. The siren, the emergency siren in Poonaloo went out during the last water main break, which was over a year ago. So Poonaloo has no emergency sirens. And, um, Rep Quinnlin did send and, and said that they would follow up with Ha'ima. We've asked the state, we've asked the, the city and county, and, and so they're saying it's with Ha'ima, but we've heard nothing, and it's been well over a year and a lot of requests.
Yeah.
Let's open it on record.
Okay.
The emergency siren in Poonaloo.
Okay, the emergency siren in Poonaloo, and, uh, Rep Quinnlin was supposed to follow up with you. With Ha'ima, get back to the board. Okay, um, the other thing too is that you could talk to the voters, but I know that they're not here. Okay, got it. All right. Thank you, all the eight minutes. Okay, thank you very much. That concludes our government reports, uh, section of the agenda. We will move forward with our presentations, which is first off, a special management area use permit, construction on a parcel with building of a newly detached garage and renovation of third-floor recreational room in the existing main house in a partial location of the Mall Portion of the lot outside the shoreline. Setback at 56155 Kamehameha Highway, Kahuku, 967, uh, 12, TNT 156001090. Representative Mark? Allen? Is he online? Mark, are any representative from, for this project? Contact I got was that they would be here to present. That's not good.
Yeah. I don't have anything on my either.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let us make a notice. And we'll move forward in our agenda. That's concerning. Okay, moving forward in our agenda, we will go and proceed to addition of board water supply for the full five-year wait, water rate schedule. You get Mark eight minutes.
Dude.
We're, we're way of
Nothing I can do about it. Eva, are you ready? Okay, please start. Next slide, please. I'll get to this pretty quickly, because I'm sure everyone has questions. Next slide. Okay, thank you. Uh, as you all know, we have a very large and complex water system. We serve over 170,000 services islandwide. We are not the only water system on the island, but we are the largest. Next slide. Okay, we are a semi-autonomous agency of the city and county of Kahalulu. We're solely funded by rate payers. We receive no funding from property taxes. Some people think we do, but we don't. The rates only apply to water, not sewer. I think most of us, like I am, on the North Shore, are on seafull or septic. So we don't get a sewer bill, thank God. Uh, and all rates are approved by our board. The, our board is appointed, five members are appointed by the, uh, mayor, approved by the council. And we have two ex officio, uh, the Department of Facilities Maintenance, and the Director of the Department of Transportation, of Transportation and Stink of Light. So that's a seven-member board. Yeah, next slide, please. Sorry for the delay. Yeah. Uh, this is where our money goes. Uh, most of it, about a third of it, goes to operations and maintenance. Uh, and of course, labor. Everyone who's ever owned a small business knows that labor is a large part of any cost of business, so about 29% between health and retirement and salaries goes to our employees. And then electricity, capital improvements, and debt service. Our operating expenditures for 20 fiscal year 2024 are 276.4 million. We kept our budget flat year over year. We only had a 0.2% increase in our budget from fiscal year 2023. Next slide, please. This is the lane, this is bandwidth.
Yeah.
So sound.
No, that's okay.
Okay. So what did we do with the last rate increase? We do our rate increases in five-year increments. In 2020, uh, 2018 to 2023, we had nearly 500 projects at nearly $800 million. Um, we have almost 200 in planning and almost 300 in, uh, construction. Next slide. Uh, as we all know, COVID affected all of us. It caused a change in our water patterns where businesses which are actually pay the highest rates It caused a change in our water patterns where businesses which are actually pay the highest rates. We're not in business, no restaurants, no anything. But the single family, we're using more water at home, but a single family rates are tiered rates. So the less you use, the less you pay. Inflation also hit us in our last set of raises. We were only look, we only raised just under thirteen percent for our last set of five year raises. Unfortunately, inflation was closer to twenty one percent. And so we lost purchasing power and it was harder for us to buy pipe and other things such as that. No surprise here, electricity went up, our electrical costs for fiscal year twenty twenty, our bill was thirty three million dollars. And that is with a program. We actually have solar vote to vote to pay on a lot of our facilities now. Even with that, as you can see, even though the kilowatt hours went down, the costs were still going up. So we were about five point five million, twenty percent over our budget that we thought we would pay. Next slide, please. Red Hill, we are currently out getting permitted for monitoring and exploratory wells. Now Red Hill isn't the only reason that we have these increases, but it is a part of the reason. We've had, we have to replace seventeen point five millions of gallons of water per day. And so one way we do that is we're looking at monitoring exploratory wells. One thing I wanted to mention, because I see Melody's online. At the Kahului Neighborhood Board last night, a number was given for the cost, because I'm sure somebody here tonight will ask us that question is what is the cost impact to us? We do not, I want to repeat, we do not yet have that number. The number that was given last night was not an accurate number. We do apologize for that. We don't know yet, but that full number will be. But we're just starting to fill all the costs together. The other thing I want to assure everybody, we are keeping all of our options open. We are not going to put take anything off the table. We have had a conversation with the Navy. Basically, they've told us it's above their pay grade here. It's a Department of Defense issue. And we are talking at the highest levels in Washington as well. So nothing is off the table and we are working with all of our elected officials at every level as well. The final thing on Red Hill, I wanted to mention had to do with. Oh, shoot, lost my thought, somebody asked the question, I'll get it back, thank you, continue on. We have tightened our belt, as I mentioned, we only increased our budget point two percent year over year. Starting back about twenty seventeen, we really, we would budget, you know, you make your budget and then you see what we actually spent. Well, our budget was up here and our actual expenditure were here, so we realized we had a bit of a problem. So Ernie really challenged all of the departments to close that gap and it's gotten a lot tighter over the years. We deferred projects, we deferred purchases. Really cut things back where everyone. This to our board on a quarterly basis. If anyone wants detailed information, we're happy to share it. We're also audited annually to make sure that our processes and procedures are accurate and follow best accounting practices. So for us, it is a matter of balancing safe and dependable water with rate. And this is what we're looking to spend the money on. The increases on, you can see new pipe has been browned. The monitoring and exploratory wells, you can see is a big expenditure coming up. And then it slowly reduces and they it's back towards the end of the five year. So this just gives you an idea of where we want to spend the money and some of the projects associated with it. Next slide, please. We have several customer classes, single family residential makes up ninety percent of our customer base. They use just a little over thirty five percent of all the water. They only pay ninety five percent of the cost to serve them. We do what we call, every time we do a five year study on rate schedule, we do what we call a cost of service study. And then we determine how much it's costing us to deliver water to each of these classes. Multi units, only about four percent of our customer base. They use only about twenty one, twenty percent and they actually pay a hundred percent. Five years ago, we did this study, we realized multi unit was paying about a hundred and seven percent over what it costs to serve them. So we brought them down immediately to a hundred percent, to be fair. And but we kept single family, which is the bulk at ninety five percent. When we were running the scenarios for this year, we looked at moving single family closer to a hundred percent. And to be honest with you, it just wasn't feasible. As you will see, the rates are gonna be high enough as it is. We didn't want to really push it any further than we have to. Agriculture is less than one percent and only do sixty percent cost of recovery, because we know ag is a policy decision that we have made in our agency to support sustainable ag. And I'm sorry, they flipped too soon. And then we have non-residential, which is. Five percent of our customer base, but they use about thirty four percent. But they pay a hundred and seventeen percent of the cost across to serve them. And the reason we do that, and they actually subsidize everybody else. They subsidize, subsidize, single family, we subsidize agriculture and some of the non-polit we do. So these are the rates that we're looking at, ten percent, ten percent, nine, eight and a half, eight and eight. For this time, and this will allow us to close that inflation gap that we experienced. Recover some of the costs for electricity, it does cover some Red Hill expenses, but definitely not all of them. Because again, we don't know what that final number will be. Next slide, please. All customer increases will have the same rate increase across the board. To be honest with you, over five years, it's gonna be sixty six percent. But because single family and multi unit are tiered, next slide, please. The increases vary from tier. So in the single family, we have something called the essential needs tier. And we're only going to raise that by about two and a half percent. About ten percent of our customer base only uses two thousand gallons or less. And we only charge you for what you use. So if you use less than two thousand, that's what you get charged for, less than two thousand. In fact, I don't even think we charge you until you hit that a thousand, until it starts occurring. So this just shows you what the tiered rates look like, next. Again, I just mentioned this, next slide, please. And again, a part of what we're trying to do is to encourage conservation. So the highest tiers will pay more. So if you're using more than thirty thousand gallons a year and three percent of our customer base actually uses that much a month, in a month. That is on our median is six thousand for a median user, that's five homes right there. So we're gonna give them the highest rates and get well deserved, because if you're using that much more, you should pay for it. But the other thing we're doing is we are going after them, we are reaching out to them, talk to them. And try to get them to understand you're using a lot of water and most of it's going to swimming pools. And landscaping and I don't need to tell you where most of those locations are. Yeah. They should go needless. But it's not the leaky. Next slide, please. And just really quickly, this is a chart showing what the average increase will look like year over year. Currently, it's more forty six, six at the end of five years, you'll be at five dollars and seventeen cents for the first tier. Now remember, everyone, you paid two thousand, this is for your first tier. Second tier is that second rate, third tier is that third rate. So it's a, so it layers on top of each other. It's not just across the board and it's a little complicated, but we do have a chart in there that explains that. And I'm gonna stop here, because I know you still have other things to deal with. And I'm happy to take any questions, thank you.
Questions from board members in person?
Have a mission statement. What is it?
I can deliver safe, affordable and dependable water.
Somebody asked me, you've got your, your response. A very expensive, very expensive. But I noticed that it's only that it's not the best, the regeneration. It's still very scrap.
Well, actually, we do do recycled water in Honolulu. No, I understand what you're saying, sir. So I just wanted to give you some examples of things that we are working on, because you're absolutely correct, you're correct. So we do do recycled water, we want to expand that. I know the Senator referred to that earlier with Pani Oik Maria Corbets.
Yeah, I'm not referring you, sorry. That's amazing, but for example, you extract from the front of the village. How is it refreshed?
The rain.
I understand, but it might be.
Which we do. Well, actually, it comes out of a broader resources, you don't, you're correct, you don't see that in, that it's in our operations budget.
I think it's very important to accelerate. They find it to different.
We actually give, I believe it's a couple hundred thousand to the Ko'ola Loa watershed program. And also to the YNI watershed program. We're also looking at a potential hydroelectric for offer for recharge with the new water reservoirs.
I'm familiar with this, but my point is, there's not a simple, I'm restoring.
Not in here, you're absolutely right.
Store, definitely, wouldn't extract.
No, I hear you. In our water. Yeah, and you're absolutely correct, in our water master plan, which is on our website, and I can send your chair the link. And there's information about restoration of them. You're right, you are correct, there's nothing with that, I agree. Yeah, thank you.
All right, any other questions from members of the public in person?
Absolutely. Um, uh, so, what's, and thank you so much. Water goes to WFS. Thank you. How much water does the department come groundwater from Oahu?
About a hundred and forty five million gallons per day.
Do you know how much? The restorative efforts, how many gallons per day, any restoration efforts are?
I will definitely get that number for you.
Okay. Outside of the water use and development plans, are there any other plans that talk about recharge for the aquifers?
Our water master plan.
Okay, is there a, like a percentage goal?
Yes, there is.
That's articulated in there? Is it, how close to a hundred percent?
You know, I don't know, off the top of my head, but yes, we have all of that, that detail. It's also no strategic, uh, uh, because. But I can get you that information.
Okay, that would be wonderful.
Not a problem.
I also had a question about what the, what Oahu's average, what's your average water use? For single family residents?
Average day, nine thousand gallons per month.
Okay, nine thousand.
Well, what was the sixth, is that? But that was median. For the median. The median is half people use that hard process, that might, on average, so a single family resident is nine thousand gallons per month.
Okay, based on these rate increases, have you folks done any mock builds?
Oh, yeah.
So and is that available for folks to take a look at?
Get a copy of that without all. Yeah, right there.
And then the proposed rate increases, are those just for usage? Are there anticipated increases for service fees and the other fees that are included?
The only other fee we found for customer charge was based on size of the leader, and yet that will be going up as well, yes.
Okay, so that's like if it's a five inch or a one inch, okay, thank you.
Any other questions from members of the community in person? Okay, here it is, see none, any other questions from members of the community online? Melody, please proceed with your question.
Thank you Chair. Aloha Kathleen, thank you for recognizing that I've asked a question on Red Hill at yesterday's Kahului Neighborhood Board. I'm looking at your chart now, it says what the rate increases will pay for, one point two six billion in a hundred and thirty two capital projects. And then you note on the yellow part, monitoring and exploratory wells. And it also includes Kalailoa Seawater D Sal. And the amount on your chart is at three hundred and ninety nine million dollars. Is that?
That's a, that's a compilatable number of projects, Melody, that's not just for Red Hill.
Okay, okay. So you mentioned then, we don't have an amount just for Red Hill at the moment.
Correct.
Okay, when do you think you'll be able to put that together?
I don't know, we're working on it right now, we're putting a number of numbers together and I think our hope is, hold on one second. By the end of November.
End of November, okay, because we would like to follow up with that, because as mentioned, the community should not have to pay for the negligence or recklessness of the Navy. So yeah, as soon as we can get that figure from Board of Water Supply, that'd be very helpful.
And please understand, we completely agree, and I think that was the other point I was gonna make, is we completely agree, we don't think it's fair that the community pays also. Unfortunately, we still have a water system that we must operate. And we, we can't wait until we get that money from the federal government. So in the meantime, we have to do whatever we have to do to make sure we're still delivering safe water to our community. But we agree with you.
Okay, timing wise, when will these monitoring, monitoring and exploratory wells start to be put in or start construction?
We have one that it looks like it will start construction at the end of November, early December. That I believe is the first one, but we're looking at about four more exploratory wells. And I keep looking at Earl Wayne Quaddick is with me tonight.
Okay.
Two more exploratory and then four more. So two exploratory and about three more monitoring wells, yeah, about three more monitoring wells, Melody.
Okay, because the CRI, we will have our next meeting probably on the sixteenth, I believe, of November. Following the F-TAC meeting. And you know, suggest that we invite Board of Water Supply and Earn Quad and yourself to apprise us as to status. And we will have probably the Secretary or Assistant Secretary of the Navy that's will, will be present. So make that a big thing. I think for us as a community, this is a big push, one of the major pushes that we need to follow up on. Appreciate, I appreciate your kuku'a, hi, thank you.
Thank you, Melody.
Thank you Chair.
Okay, thank you, any other questions from members of the public online? All right, here it is, Eva, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward, um, public input, community announcements, um, two minutes per person, please come forward.
Aloha Board, Aloha Community, my name is Ben Williams, I'm the race director for the Malakahanat Time Trial and also a triathlon that's coming up in Cavella Bay next month. The fight course is very similar to the triathlon that we operate, the Malakahanat Time Trial. Of course, it starts near the farm stand in Cavella Bay and then heads towards Poonaloo, turns around, comes back. Um, it's a small field, I recognize that people have just been hammered by the century ride, I know they don't make it all the way quite up here, I think they make it. Well, actually, Haula, I think is the turn on, right? So you guys are probably terrible timing to come in and talk about this. I'm happy to to discuss it further. The the main points I think that make us much different are the number of riders that come out significantly smaller event. And our riders are much higher skilled, these are racers, they train. And and this is typically not their first event. Safety of riders on the road is is my biggest concern. I've been putting these events on for about fifteen years and there are definitely precautions that we we take. We don't want any accidents either. And also, we don't want to disrupt the community, so we we want to make sure that we we minimize our impact to the community. Um, and also we don't want to disrupt the community, so we we want to make sure that we we minimize our impact to the community. Uh, that that patiently tolerates us putting on our thing out here. Um, I'm happy to answer questions or or discuss it further.
Announcement, so. Turns out the announcement, but people want to come.
Yeah, I'll hang around if you guys want.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other announcements from members of the public or anyone in person? We'll go here and we'll go here.
On behalf of the Hartland Community Association, I just wanted to announce that uh tomorrow, uh we are having a presentation in this room on Solarise eight oh eight for Koholau Loa. So that's from ten to eleven thirty here at the community center. Solarise eight oh eight is about providing solar, rooftop solar for people. Um, especially if you are medium to low income and you want rooftop solar. There's a way to get good loans to do that. So come out tomorrow and learn about that at ten o'clock here at Ha'ula Community Center. We also have our Ha'ula Farmers Market tomorrow, so that's from ten to two. I'm sorry, Saturday, ten to two. Thank you all. Um, we spent um today working down at uh Honolulu Holly with the mayor and the managing director and Department of Emergency Management and the Resilience Office on a FEMA Direct Technical Assistance Grant that our community will be provided that grant to support us in this area of Koholau Loa. And we will uh be working on that grant for two to three years with FEMA. And we hope to put in a new FEMA brick grant in January. That's our goal. Okay, um, also, we had Team Rubicon out here, um, Saturday and Sunday, twenty five people uh taking out invasive species on the hub land. And they're making a great progress. We got a roll off today and we're gonna be hauling that stuff away. They're coming back next month for a whole week. We also had the fire station number fifteen out there on Tuesday and their folks are helping us out too, helping us clear the hillside. All of that is really great because when we get this done and start construction, we're also gonna build an agro forest for food security for our community. Alright, um, next thing is, um, I do want to mention, this is next month, but on November thirteenth, we're having at this site a climate-ready Oahu uh community open house from six thirty to eight thirty, I think. And that's uh supported by the um Office of Resilience downtown in the city. Uh, we've had something similar to that a couple of years ago, but this is bringing us up to speed on what's happening right now. So for climate-ready Oahu, the presentation is November thirteenth, Monday at six thirty right here in Ha'ula. Thank you very much.
Next announcement.
Aloha, my name is Amy Nielsen. I am proud to say that we now have our WIC office open here at the Ha'ula Community Center. Um, Wednesday, Thursdays and Fridays, we're here from nine to five, so we are seeing people here in person. Um, we are also working, WIC is also working on um other satellite offices here in the Koholau Loa region, so look out for that coming up.
Right, any other announcements and for people in person? If not online, do we have any uh members of the committee? Uh, have any committee announcements or? Okay, hearing and CNN, thank you very much. That concludes the announcement portion. We'll move over to our next agenda item, which is a thousand dollars for board outreach. Give us an explanation of that.
Okay, so I got um some requests from um by Sheradadi, you're about to have the equipment actually purchased for here. So basically, we have to do, we have to build or we have to do outreach. Um, it can't be purchased, but what we want to do is we want to use the thousand dollars that you guys have available. Every board has a thousand dollars to contribute as outreach, whether it's gonna be improving or beautification such as, you know, we could beautify Ha'ula Community Center, like doing a repaint or trying to improve any kind of facilities. But it has to be done where either um, well, the board and also any other organizations that can help with upgrading Koholau Community Center. It could also be like painting, um, you know, sidewalks. It could also be those kinds of things. Unfortunately, we can't paint crosswalks because um that's something that has to be regulated. That's something that's done by the Department of Transportation. But um in regards to beautification of any kind of location, especially Ha'ula, because we have, we we do our meetings here. Um, we can do that, but a thousand dollars is available for all the board um to do for outreach. Yeah.
I'll just let you know, originally, we asked for the thousand dollars here for making our food pantry better, more accessible uh and having more shelving. But if we can't do that, well, go ahead and we have a lot of beautification needs here and um I would say getting some paint and some cleaning materials and uh working on washing windows and there's a lot, a lot of things to do here that uh replacing some of these screens here that would be very helpful. So yes, we'll 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 set something up. We have twenty partners, so we'll have a partnership meeting and ask them all to come out to help us too, as well as the community.
Okay, so. And this um.
Yes, so the question was, is if this a thousand dollars can add, there could be donations to it. Yes, you can. So for instance, if you wanted to, like, my Wa'ula Kahala Board, they have a thousand dollars to do outreach where they're gonna, the potential project is that they're gonna go to Kahalua and they're gonna actually distribute like emergency kits for emergency um programs um out there. Um, some people are providing the printing, so it'll be outside of the thousand dollars. Um, and that's gonna be by private donors. So they're gonna, so that's possible to actually add to the thousand dollars so that there's more funds to do outreach. Thank you. Yeah.
Hey. Do we? Sorry, this is board business, right?
Um.
Is it board business?
It is board business.
Hey, um, this is strictly board business. Unfortunately, um, we wanna just talk about this thousand dollar outreach. Um, so right now, do I have a motion from board members or how we want to use this money? Okay, and for neighborhood board. Yeah, do I have a second? Alright, you have a second and a third.
Okay.
Do we need a real power?
No.
Alright, any objections? Right, hearing and CNN, chair votes aye and.
So what it is, is that you have to give us quotes of what you need and then um you just submit it to me or email it to me, any kind of expenses that you guys need, need. And then we actually have like a credit card or a company credit card, like a P card that we use. We purchase those things and then after that, you can, you can do it, you know. And then also, we're gonna have volunteers from the NCO office um to come and help with the outreach as well, because I feel that that's important, that us as um our neighborhood assistants and even people in our department, and we'll help them all too. Ooh, but yeah.
Okay, alright, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, uh board announcements, is the next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, November ninth, twenty twenty three, six thirty here in this room and online. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Alright.